Good evening. I’m Joan Hardy, co-president of the Legal Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank, and I would like to welcome you to this forum. As we begin our evening of democracy in action, please join me in the pledge allegiance of our flag. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin, I want to take a brief moment to tell you about an important milestone in California history. It was 100 years ago this year when California passed a law which gave women the right to vote. Although it wasn’t until 1920, when our Constitution was amended, giving women the right to vote nationwide, in 1911, 100 years ago, here in California, which as usual were ahead of our time, we passed a law giving women the right to vote. What’s important to note about what happened in 1911 was that this law passed by a narrow margin. It passed by 240 votes. It was 240 men who made the difference, giving women the right to vote. So I want to remind voters, if you don’t think your vote counts, it does. And please remember to vote this April 5th. The League thanks all the candidates here for this forum tonight. Thank you for coming. The hallmark of democracy is a willingness of our members, of our community, to treat each other with courtesy and respect, not just the people we agree with. It is in this spirit that we are here this evening to engage yet again in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confronts our communities. The League would like to thank the city of Glendale for once again providing voters with the opportunity to view the forum both in person here tonight and via rebroadcast on GTV6 and the web, technologies undreamed of 100 years ago. We are particularly grateful for the assistance of the city staffer Vicki Gartner and city clerk Artie Kusakian. Thanks also to the outstanding technical crew of GTV6. We also thank our League volunteers, whose dedication and commitment to the civic life of our community make the forum possible. And now, we’ll begin the forum, and I’ll introduce Chris Carson, your moderator for tonight.
This forum will be televised live, as Joan said, and then rebroadcast at various times at GTV6 up until the election. Please tell all your friends to watch it. No reproduction or rebroadcast of this forum may be made without the written permission of the League of Women Voters of Glendale, Burbank. The audience here tonight is invited to submit written questions for the candidates. Please raise your hand if you would like to ask a question, and one of the moderators will give you a card and pencil. Questions will be collected only during the opening statements and the first two questions. The public has submitted a fair number of questions already via our website. We would like to request that the audience turn off all cell phones and pagers and all kinds of electronic devices, whatever they may be, and that they refrain from applauding or otherwise disrupting the forum. If a candidate’s supporters cause disruption during another candidate’s remarks, the other candidates will be given additional time to compensate for the interruption. Initially, each candidate will be allowed two minutes for an opening statement. Following this, I will ask questions submitted by the audience and the public. The first candidate will have two minutes to respond to the first question. The other four candidates will then have 60 seconds each to respond to the same question. Then we’ll go to the second candidate, who will have two minutes to respond to that question, and then a 60-second response by the other candidates, so on. There will be 12 questions at all. Since we already have more than 12 questions submitted, it won’t be possible to use all of the questions submitted during the forum. And then during the question period, all candidates will be given two minutes each for a closing statement, going in reverse order of candidates from that used for the opening statements. Our timekeepers, who are seated right here, will alert candidates to the time remaining with signs of one minute, 30 seconds, and a red stop sign when they’re out of time. Attacks of a personal nature, including private matters, having no bearing on a candidate’s public persona or ability to perform the duties of the office in a competent, ethical manner, will not be tolerated. If a candidate makes a personal attack during their remarks, the time required for me to interrupt the candidate and remind him of the rule will be taken from the speaking time. I would like to begin by introducing the candidates for city council in ballot order: Mr. Dave Weaver, Mr. Rafi Manukian, Mr. Mike Mohill, Mr. Shahae Karolian, and Mr. John Drayman. We will now begin with opening statements. Mr. Weaver, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Before I get into my opening comments, I’d like to let all of you know that so far in this campaign, I’ve been accused of being corrupt, money laundering, accepting money from developers for votes, city union contributions for paying pension increases, and being investigated by the FBI and the district attorney, and more. And if you believe any of that, there’s no way I’m going to convince you here tonight to think anybody else. And you should also know from the start, because you probably won’t hear it, Mr. Manukian, Mr. Karolian, and Mr. Mohill have all stated publicly that they want to fire Mr. Starbird, our city manager. I certainly don’t want to lose the best city manager in California. Here’s what Standard &amp; Poor’s said recently about Glendale’s credit rating. They raised our ratings because it reflected their view of the city’s improved general fund reserves and management practices, their view of our underlying general credit worthiness. That’s led by our city manager. You believe what has been said of me, or if you want Mr. Starbird fired as the premier CEO of California, then you know who to vote for. As for myself, I’d like to remind our residents that we have a Class 1 fire department, one of the 10 safest cities in the United States, clean streets, weekly trash pickup, our own electrical company. In fact, a residential poll said that 90% of the people in this city think it is a good city. We live in tough times; we must live within our means. We must remain fiscally conservative and try to balance residents’ needs with the funds that we have available.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and I would like to thank all of you for attending and those watching at home. Our great city of Glendale is facing difficult economic times: shrinking budgets, allegations of mismanagement, lack of transparency in government, calls for water conservation followed by rate increases followed by promises of additional rate increases, promises of view ordinances that after four years still has not materialized, purchases of useless buildings, overtime by employees out of control, hiring more managers at exorbitant salaries. We have a workforce of managers, not workers. They ask us, the voters, to approve more bonds, more fees, more hidden taxes, more rate increases. I call it the money pit: the more we give, the more they want. I’m a veteran of the U.S. Air Force with an honorable discharge and was awarded the Air Force Commendation Medal. I’m a CPA by profession and have completed my master’s in business administration. Over the past four years, I have helped found the most successful and most watched television station in the Glendale, Burbank area: U.S. Armenian Television. It happens to be an Armenian-language television station, but more people watch our channels longer than any other station in the area, including all the major channels. Currently, I serve as a chief financial officer of the organization. I also have eight years of municipal government experience and served two terms as mayor. I have experienced city operations from within and watched curiously from the outside as a taxpayer. It’s time for a change. I’m running to offer a viable alternative to the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Mohill. I’ve lived in Glen Oaks Canyon for the past 33 years and in Glendale 60 years. I’m a product of the Glenda system and a Vietnam veteran. As a retired businessman, I have witnessed the financial deterioration of our city for the past 10 years. This election is about character and the restoration of the public trust. It’s about fixing our government’s wasteful spending and controlling insiders promoting their self-enrichment. Tonight, you’re going to see what has gone wrong with our government in the last several years. We have a city budget that has doubled in the past 10 years from over $400 million to $800 million, and yet the city population has grown less than 5%. We have a city debt that has increased by more than $300 million over the same period, but the city services have not improved. We have a pension obligation that has grown by $600 million, and if left uncontrolled, will drive this city into bankruptcy. And finally, we have two council candidates under investigation by federal authorities or charged by the district attorney for unethical conduct. The incumbent candidates will tell you stories about their accomplishments, but the facts will show that increasing our debt by hundreds of millions of dollars is not a record to be proud of, neither is a legacy of unfunded pension obligations for our children to inherit. With your support, I will restore the public trust and bring back responsible and accountable government to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Shahae Karolian. I live, work, and I shop in Glendale. As a business owner, I know how the economic downturn has impacted working men and women throughout the city. I’ve been fortunate to have worked for the Glendale Police Department, serving the community for many years, where I got to appreciate the lovely neighborhoods of up north and recognize the issues and difficulties down south. In my 30 years in Glendale, I’ve learned that city government is about preserving or improving our quality of life. We need to keep Glendale as one of the safest cities in the nation, and we need to promote safer traffic conditions for all. A safe city also means that we need to address the issues of gang violence and drug use at the very early stage. Today, we’re facing a serious budgetary challenge that is partially due to the economic conditions and partially is self-inflicted. We now have a top-heavy bureaucracy that we must fix to restore a prudent budget process. I know that we must move the city forward with smart growth, that we must preserve the character of our historic neighborhoods, and that we must build green spaces and parkland before we continue with more development. That also means that we must develop fair policies for electricity and water use and plan for investment in our infrastructure before we increase payroll and benefits. I would like to see a city promoting small businesses to create local job opportunities. A vote for me means safer streets, smart urban growth, a truly responsible budget, and strong efforts to create a more vibrant local economy. I hope that you can join me in that quest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. I’d also like to thank the League for affording us this little slice of democracy tonight. Four years ago, ladies and gentlemen, in these very council chambers, I reminded you that together we share a common stake in this city, its future and how we’re to be represented, that local government is meant to be our most available form of representation. Well, now, folks, they say all politics is local, and I’d like to add that all local politics is personal. And as your city council member, you know that I take my personal relationship with each of you very seriously. For the last four years, representing your interests on this very council dais has been my first priority, and all matters of my public advocacy, economic development, and the allocation of your municipal resources has flown from that priority. So I come before you again this evening to renew this commitment to you, not because it’s the politically expedient thing to do at election time, but because it is the right, fair, and decent thing for all elected officials to do. So if my message resonates with you, if my body of work in the last four years has benefited you, if my vision for this city inspires you, then I ask you to please reelect me, John Drayman, on the April 5th ballot. And with that vote, and with that, I thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. The first question will be directed to Mr. Weaver. Governor Brown’s proposed budget for fiscal year 2012 entails dramatic cuts and a significant realignment between state and local governments. What do you believe will be the greatest impact of these changes on the city of Glendale? What specific types of cuts will be most likely? Your two-minute response, please.
Well, the legislature, in all their wisdom, changes the direction every day. It’s a very dynamic process. When you put a group of Republicans and a group of Democrats together, you never know what they’ll come up with. One, to me, that gets the most airtime is redevelopment agencies, the takeaway of our opportunity to have a redevelopment agency. People don’t understand how important a redevelopment agency is to the city. We keep a tax increment, which allows us to build affordable housing. That would all go away if we didn’t have it. It allows us to go into areas that need to be assembled for future projects. It would all be taken away from us. That money would all go back to the state, supposedly, from what we hear, going to the schools, if you want to believe that. In my 14 years, I’ve never seen the state take anything away from the cities in terms of money and ever return it in any way, shape, or form. The state takes what they want. So the redevelopment agency impact will be significant. Remember, the Americana was built in the redevelopment zone, the Galleria was built in the redevelopment zone, Bunker Hill in Los Angeles was built in a redevelopment zone. And we have the San Fernando Corridor with Disney and DreamWorks, all in a redevelopment zone. So to me, the biggest impact, and we should know in two days, if the state votes on it, whether we will have that left. I think that is the main thing that could hurt this city the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. The cuts from redevelopment agency will certainly affect the ability of cities to rejuvenate dilapidated areas. It will also affect low-income housing. However, the more serious cuts that the state will implement will be to social services, and I believe that that will be the greatest impact on the community and those who are in need. There are those who need housing, affordable housing, but I believe that the social services that are being provided, either through nonprofits or through the state, are the most important aspects of serving the community, and cutting those programs would certainly have a deep impact on the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Redevelopment agencies is the bittersweet pill. We have ADI because of that. Affordable housing developer that has corrupted this city by giving our council people thousands of dollars in campaign contributions, and the next day, our councilmen are voting on their projects and approving millions of dollars. We have incumbents here who are benefit of that type of government. Definitely need low-cost housing. By eliminating state money, we can use that money instead for schools and colleges.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I believe that whether the legislature decides one way or another, we are already feeling the impact due to our lack of prudent action. Just imagine half a million dollars being spent on one apartment unit. We all know about the ADI situation. Spending half a million dollars for one unit is definitely wasting the allocated money, which could have been used much properly had we redirected it to serve the education system.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
Rather than repeat what you’ve already heard, let me explain how the lack of our ability to use economic development through redevelopment will affect everyone, not just those who live or work or have business in our redevelopment area. Without the ability to bring business to Glendale, such as LegalZoom, which we’ve brought to Glendale, Technicolor, and other DreamWorks, Disney, that employ large numbers of our residents, those funds that those folks would spend in our downtown, those sales tax dollars, will not flow into our general fund, and all of our public safety services, streets, and so on are paid by that. So it will be far-reaching. This will be a very difficult pill. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Manukian. In light of the continuing budget reductions, what do you believe should be the top three issues that the city council should prioritize? Two-minute response, please.
Well, certainly, the financial issues and the budgetary issues are at the top of the menu, and the charter of the city of Glendale requires that the budget be balanced every year. However, the important issue is how efficiently are the city resources being used to balance the budget and how are we paying for those resources? How are we paying for those expenses through those resources? For the budget, we need to implement measures. We need to implement performance indicators to find out which departments are doing well, which areas are doing well, and which areas are not doing well. Not to penalize the areas that are not doing well, but to help them achieve better performance for the community. Another issue that is in the front burner of everyone in the community is traffic and traffic mitigation measures. I think with the budget, we do have to address some of the traffic issues that we’re facing in the city, some of the cut-through traffic that go through the residential neighborhoods, and we have to put mitigation measures to avoid that. And that’s it, traffic mitigation measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Well, you know, the budget is a serious issue here. How do we take care of it? Our basic expense is the pension obligation that we’ve committed ourselves. $150,000 pension for an individual does not buy a swimming pool or soccer fields. That’s where all the money is. We eliminate that pension obligation, we’ll have money in the bank. The other issue that’s important are the utility fees: water, electric. They keep going up and up to maintain our bloated budget.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I believe the question was main three issues on the budget.
Yes. Yeah. You want me to repeat it?
No, thank you. My priorities would be as follows, not necessarily in the same order, but collectively. One would be jobs, creating jobs, encouraging our -- offering our youth employment within the city. Encouraging big businesses to come into the city so we can address the underemployment for adults. Traffic and safety issues are also a main concern for each one of us, that need to be addressed with strict laws and enforcement of the law, and supporting small businesses as an individual who has his own small business. I do know what small businesses are going through today, so the city government needs to address that issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. Well, I’m going to give you two. One has to do with our city contracts. We will continue to keep a tight rein on our city contracts with our employees. We have a hard hiring freeze in place. We introduced two new tiers of hiring, which is an investment in the future for this city in lower salaries and benefits. Our employees continue to pay their own share of their benefits, and we are unprecedented in the city of Glendale throughout the state in that our employees also contribute 8.5% of the city’s contribution to their benefits as well. But salaries and benefits aren’t the only solution. We also need to continue, and this is point two, with economic development in our city. Glendale needs to continue to be a destination for retail, entertainment, recreation, art, and culture, so that we can continue to grow our city’s benefit from sales tax revenues. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I misunderstood the question. I thought it was the top three priorities in developing the budget, the upcoming budget. In saying that, the last three years, we have balanced the budget with cuts, significant cuts into the millions of dollars. Our goal this year will be to be able to maintain the same services, but we know we’re going to have to do it at less cost. Staff has been working for months now, all the departments, to look at where they could make cuts through outsourcing or being -- I hate to use the word “efficient,” that’s not a good word to use. But we will have to look at all the departments. There’s no one high priority. It’s where within existing services that we now provide, where we can trim without sacrificing what the people have become used to. And I know it can be done. We’re well on the way. We already have over 100 vacancies that we haven’t filled now for two to three years, and that’ll go significantly towards reducing the deficit.
Thank you. The next question will be to Mr. Mohill. Many jurisdictions throughout California require that paid lobbyists who work in such jurisdictions must be registered there. Do you think Glendale should similarly require registration of lobbyists? Please explain your answer.
We need lobbyists. Unfortunately, they’re a necessary evil. They do the work in Sacramento or us, or in Washington, D.C. It’s impossible for the city council to go to Washington, D.C. or Sacramento, so we need someone to plead our case. I’m all in favor of continuing to have lobbyists on our behalf.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, I would like to continue the situation as it is. We do need lobbyists in order to address our issues and protect whatever we can, whether it is from the state budget or federal budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
The question was about registering them. I think that is a great idea. Glendale currently works with two legislative analysts, we call them technically, but they’re lobbyists, one on the federal level and one in Sacramento. These are important tools. We’re competing with other cities and other municipalities and areas for Glendale’s piece of your tax dollars. Just to give you one item, our regional DNA lab, which has moved Glendale forward immensely in terms of solving crimes, as well as Burbank and the other cities in the region, that is a result of work of our federal lobbyists. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
Yes, all the time. Most of the years I’ve been here, we’ve had federal and state lobbyists. They managed to bring us in millions of dollars. They’re there, they know the procedure, they know the staffs of all the senators, the congressmen, the state legislatures. It’s something we don’t have the time to do, and they have been very efficient for us. When I worked for the Army Corps of Engineers, every city I was in had lobbyists in Washington because you’re trying to get a piece of the pie, and it’s very difficult if you are not there every day, and you have to know how to relate to the Congress, the United States, on what they expect and what they will go to bat for. As far as lobbyists here, heck, all the council people get lobbied. Everyone I’ve ever served with, including myself, we get lobbied. But I don’t know how you’re going to register the kind of people that lobbyists hear. They’re trying to explain their projects. We all listen. I guess you could call that lobbying, but I don’t see how you would ever register them.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian, your one-minute response.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Many local jurisdictions throughout California require that paid lobbyists who work in such jurisdictions must be registered there. Do you think Glendale should similarly require registration of Do you think Glendale should similarly require registration of lobbyists?
Absolutely. During the eight years that I was on the council, I had, you know, people would approach with issues, and you never knew who was what and who was doing what. So I think it's a great idea, whoever came up with it, and if I'm elected, I will push for registration for everyone who is going to lobby city council members. I think they should be registered, so that the council members know that when an individual comes up, he is pushing a project or he's lobbying for something, as opposed to telling you, hey, I'm your buddy, let's get together, you know, have lunch and see what happens. I think that kind of undermines the process, and if we have registered lobbyists, I think everything is open to the public. The public knows who you're meeting with, and you know who you're meeting with. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. The next question will be from Mr. Karolian. Several years ago, a $1,000 campaign contribution limit was introduced in Glendale. What impact do you think this limit has had on Glendale elections? Do you think any changes should be made to the contribution limit? Your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. That was back in 2009, if I'm not mistaken. And yes, I even suggested that the amount should be lower than 1,000, because that gives an opportunity for all challengers who may not necessarily have the contacts with developers, contacts with lobbyists, contacts with consultants, to be able to raise all those monies that incumbents are or have in their access. As far as impact, I personally, other than being positive, I don't see any negative impact, because, again, it gives the opportunity for the challengers to be at least to some level, it still is not equal level, but at least to some degree, to be able to get their voice out, be seen, and try to do the best they can to reach out to the community, whether that is through literature or meeting with the public. So on the other hand, though, it gives, it limits the potential of any corruption by incumbents. When you have limited funds coming in, definitely there's a limit to each and every special interest group or individual who can contribute to an incumbent. And in that aspect, it is a very positive ordinance, and I wish it was less than 1,000.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
Well, this part of campaign finance reform came in 2007, and I know because I'm the one that raised it on the City Council dais. Our mayor at the time, Arna Najarian, and I were the two on this council that proposed that it be limited to $250, but better to have the legislation than none at all, and we ended up with 1,000. I think it's too soon to know whether it's working and whether it's not working. This is the first complete election cycle this city has seen from start to finish under this new campaign reform. So it's too soon to know. On the positive side, it is limiting the amount of dollars flowing to individual candidates. That's probably a very good thing. On the possible negative side, it is also possible that it's limiting the candidates' opportunities or abilities to get the word out to the community. You'll notice that it's, many people don't even know we're having an election, and that's a piece of that as well. But all in all, I think it's too soon to know. We'll make an evaluation, I think, at the end of the cycle.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
At the time of this discussion, I really didn't care if it was 250 or 1,000, because having done six campaigns, I kind of know how, how do you get the message out without spending money? You have to put out yard signs, you have to send at least one brochure. Eighty-some thousand registered voters in this city, how do you even remotely get anything to them? No candidate can afford to do that. The ones that finish in all my elections, I've usually raised less money than the winners, just tried to be more efficient. But you have the cost of mailing, which could be $10,000, $15,000, have signs, at least $2,000, and whatever else you do, TV spots, whatever, it all adds up. So where's the money coming from? Like Whitman did it all with her own money. Governor Brown did what I knew would happen, it may happen this campaign, independent expenditure committees, unknown to the general public, out there raising money. Governor Brown did that, and I wouldn't be surprised if it happened here.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchyan, your one-minute response, please.
I think the limits on financial contributions were right on. I agree with our current mayor, who was in favor of $250 limits. I think that should be the limit. That's the limit in Burbank, I believe. It should be here as well. If you want to reach out and communicate with the public, there's many ways of doing it. You don't have to spend that much money to do it. I've been at both ends of this argument, and I believe that having contribution limits is completely positive, so I'm all for it.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Well, my campaign has been a grassroots campaign. I'm not an incumbent, so I don't have a war chest behind me. All my contributions, none of them have reached $1,000, but friends and family have contributed to me, and I appreciate all the money they have given me. Yard signs and mailers are great if you have the money. Unfortunately, unless you are already an incumbent, people like myself are at a disadvantage. And I would reduce the campaign contribution to $500. And independent committees is something that I'm worried about, because the unions haven't started doing their thing yet. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Drayman. What concrete steps can and should be taken to improve traffic safety in Glendale? Your two-minute response, please.
Well, the first thing we can do is to implement our own, fully implement our own mobility plan. This city has an excellent mobility plan that was put in place and brought forward before I was elected in 2007. In 2006, they had it in place. We still have not fully implemented that. That would be the first step. That would be my suggestion to begin with. We also need to recognize, we have about 60,000 residents in our city who are residents, I'm calling them in quotes, only from nine to five. In other words, they work in our city, commute in by automobile, and then leave our city at the end of the day. And these are people who would like to be, I would like them to be a part, some of them certainly, a part of our population 24/7. We need to get them out of their cars, is the long and short of it, and most of them tell us they would love to make Glendale their home, except that we don't have the housing inventory that they desire. By making them stakeholders in our downtown, we improve our downtown by way of their just very being here and demanding better goods, services, cleaner and safer downtown. But getting people out of their cars, better transit in our downtown, implementing our mobility study, and finally, let's continue what Councilmember Friedman has been discussing with our bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
Well, as an engineer, I think I've tried to look at every form of handling traffic, speeding, whatever in this city, any city, and I can't figure it out. We all see it. We see people breaking the law all the time, running red lights, trying to cross streets without looking to see if there's an oncoming car, where the car really controls the situation. Cell phones, using cell phones, running red lights, everything. I forecast we ought to have red light cameras in here. LA's made a lot of money out of it. People just don't care. If they're going to break the law, they're going to do it, and no matter what laws you put in, what kind of mechanisms you do, you're not going to succeed. State law and federal law govern to a degree what you're going to do on different streets of different sizes. So there's no magic bullet that's going to solve it. And public education isn't going to work either, because people don't listen. They do what they want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchyan, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I believe public education works. It works every time. If it saves one individual from driving fast, I think it's worth it. I think public, it has to be a two-pronged approach, enforcement and education. Education being first in, on either TV, GTV6, or in the papers, talking about speeding and reckless driving and the results of those two. We also need to measure the traffic infractions, the citations that are issued, where they're issued, and why they're issued. We also have to do enforcement actions where, in certain areas, we can go on for a few months and issue warning citations, not citations, just to let people know that what they're doing is not right, so that they change their behavior. And the key to the enforcement action is continuous enforcement, not on a daily basis, but not letting up, after a couple of months, actually issuing citations and then going back every month and continuing with that.
Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Up to improve traffic safety, more policemen for law enforcement would be of benefit. More public education, synchronizing our lights in the downtime area. Telecommute would encourage more people to work at home and not spend their time on the roads. Those are the main things I would do. And also, try and create more affordable housing in the downtown area.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
We need to get people out of their cars first, but at the same time, we need to reach out and educate the community, educate every single individual who comes to work in Glendale, who drives by Glendale, or who comes to make this as his or her permanent residence. In addition to education, we need to enforce the law, and we have to be very strict about enforcing the law. There was a time when I was on law enforcement, I do remember, that people came to Glendale and they behaved. They knew that you violate any law, you don't make a full stop, you do get a citation. And now, in addition to rolling stops, people are on their cell phones, texting, calling, and not paying attention to any pedestrian, to any traffic laws, and apparently, they're getting by. So enforcement has to be very strict. We need to get back to the idea that you come to Glendale, you don't violate the laws here.
Thank you. The next question will be to Mr. Weaver. We have another traffic question. Traffic gridlock is a growing problem in Glendale. What solutions would you propose?
Well, as I just said, I haven't the focus. People keep talking about synchronization of lights. That is not a cheap, inexpensive solution. It's costly and it'll take time. To show you, I said this in a previous forum, during December, when I was decorating the Rosefloat, I had occasion to be over northwest Glendale at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, far northwest Glendale. I drove from there, clear through Glendale to the Eagle Rock border, and did not hit one red light in the entire time. Why? There was nobody on the road. Just went through. When you double the population of this city during the workday hours, and they're all coming at one time and all leaving at one time, you get gridlock on all the freeways. The freeways are gridlocked. How are you going to solve that problem? You can go to a game at the Rose Bowl or the Coliseum. You can drive around at any time. You can jog around it. But when there's a game, gridlock. How you can cut down those peaks, I hear, well, people will get on their bicycles, right? Yeah, when it's pouring rain, they'll ride a bicycle, right? When it's hot, will they ride a bicycle? Maybe, maybe they won't. But to come up with a solution, the mobility plan is going to be the best thing that we can do to try to manipulate the traffic flow downtown. Synchronization is great, but there's no magic bullet out there that is going to do that for this city or for any city. We've grown so much. I've lived here all my life, and with the amount of traffic now and with the number of people that each year, there's more speeders, more people running through the city that don't give a darn about any rules. I just, I just hope this mobility plan will take us another step. Discussed at council more than one time, and we'll be doing it again. But I'm not holding my breath. We're going to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchyan, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I do believe that working with businesses and changing traffic and transportation habits of the employees would certainly work, go a long way in addressing traffic concerns. Having employers encourage employees to come to work an hour early or leave an hour later, and starting their workday maybe an hour later or a couple hours later. I don't get on downtown streets in Glendale before 10 o'clock and after 4 o'clock, so I try to avoid those hours, and that's what people should try to do. I would also encourage employers to encourage their employees to telecommute. I think that's the best way to address some of these traffic concerns. If half your employees are telecommuting half the week, I think we can certainly cut down on the number of auto trips that are being taken on the streets of our city. So those are two of the ways that I would suggest.
Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
I wrote five things down to help us in that situation. First would be synchronized lighting. Two, stagger the working hours of employees who work in Glendale. Telecommuting, more people working a four-day week, and more law enforcement for traffic. Where we can get the money from traffic, law enforcement, pensions of over $150,000 does not buy a cop, excuse me, a policeman to do law enforcement and helping the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I've taken down some notes here. Implementing mobility plan would be the first. As I said, as part of the answer to my previous question, we need to get people out of their vehicles. Excuse me, carpooling should be encouraged, and we can start that with the city employees right here. And of course, telecommuting is another option. As to synchronization of lights, I would like to invite Mr. Weaver to the corner of, or intersection of Adamson Broadway. You can stay in that, at that light for approximately a minute and a half, and it doesn't change, and there's no one crossing that intersection. So probably, the traffic engineering should do something about that at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
That may be where our missing candidate is, has stuck at that corner. When I grew up in Glendale, Glendale was a bedroom community, and it is no longer a bedroom community. We're now the third-largest city in the county, and we are, whether we like it or not, we've become a more urbanized city with all of the problems that come with a more urbanized city. And perhaps, along the way, we have not taken the steps necessary to anticipate that growth. But here we are. So to some degree, you're not going to eliminate traffic and gridlock. You've heard some examples mentioned. Again, I'll come back to our mobility plan. I hope that we can implement that fully. But there are other things we can do, like working with developers of projects to make sure that when they're building a project, they include, for example, turn lanes on the project site itself to get traffic out of the flow, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Menuchyan. Besides campaign contribution limits, are there other aspects of campaign finance reform which should be considered by the City Council? Your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. Well, the suggestion, I made notes here, the suggestion made by Mr. Mike Mohill, is certainly one of them, and that's the independent expenditures limit. I believe that implementing the campaign finance reforms and having the contribution limits to 1,000 per individuals, and then allowing independent expenditures that can spend up as much as they want, actually, on for or against the candidate, should not, does not achieve the purpose that the campaign finance reform was implemented. So I'm completely opposed, I'm completely in favor of, I'm opposed to independent expenditures against candidates of thousands of dollars, but I'm in favor of limiting as well the independent expenditures. So I think that's the road that we should follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Well, again, I would keep the amount of campaign money under $500. The issue of independent committees, I understand that we can't change that because it's a state law. As much as the non-incumbents would like that, we can't change that. But I think we should make public to the public, knowing that, who are these people who are making these independent committees? In the past, it always seems to be the safety people in the City of Glendale who always have their slate mailers. Vote for these three or two people, because they're our people. Please vote for them. It should be interesting what they would do this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karolian, your one-minute response, please.
I would like to see some limitations on independent expenditure groups, however, though, as Mr. Mohill said, that is not within the jurisdiction of a municipality. Other than the reform that has been done here, again, as I said earlier... Other than the reform that has been done here, again, as I said earlier, I would have liked it to see within the limits of $500 instead of 1,000. I think the only thing we expect, not from, not as far as financing or raising funds or contribution, we expect some decency, some integrity, some honesty, some transparency by the candidates themselves. Aside from where the money is coming from, as to what exactly they are doing, or what is being done for them through that money, is another, is more concerning to me than actual organizations funding campaigns.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. We do a number of things, such as we now limit the number of, the amount of time that a candidate can raise funds, it's now limited to 180 days on either side of the election. That never existed before, and of course, the $1,000 limit. And in addition to that, we can't roll war chests over. We have to spend down funds that are in our office holder account to below $10,000. That is also something new for this complete election cycle. Independent expenditures have been mentioned, the courts have ruled that that's considered protected speech, so there's nothing we can do about that. It's an evil that exists that we don't have control over. But I agree that also with one other thing, the news press has suggested databases of contributors that work on city subsidized projects, because currently, council has no way of knowing, candidates have no way of knowing, and our city keeps no record of that currently.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
Well, I guess I'm the one that started with the independent expenditures. I mean, because I know Governor Brown did it extensively, perfectly legal. It's independent because the candidate doesn't know what's happening. Any of us get the mailer, I don't know, it may say on there, who did it, citizens for Joe Blow, but you don't know. Now, I guess there's a way to find out, but I haven't the fogus, and you're not going to find out before the election, even if it does. Finance reform, I don't know what more we can do. More forums like this on TV, I think, would be great. Or just having, this is the only one that's on TV, and we're doing 12, 13 forums, with seven more to go. Why aren't more on TV, hearing more from our residents what they like? That's one way to get the message out that we can't get it out now. If you don't want mailers to go out, and you don't want the signs going up, then you better put us on TV, so the people know there is an election and have a choice to hear what we think.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Mohill. What do you consider as the most important environmental issues facing Glendale? Your two-minute response, please.
We have a couple issues, environmental issues. We have pollution still, bad air. We have water conservation. We need to recycle our water, so we can make it last longer. We're going to do three days a week, I don't know how long. That's all I can think of at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Corollion, your one-minute response, please.
Pollution is one, obviously, and we have, I believe, we have talked about traffic congestion, and reducing traffic would help in reducing smog and pollution. The second would be the water crisis. Recycling water is one thing that we have to follow aggressively. Saving water is another thing that, especially within communities and neighborhoods where we have the most congested families and communities, we are not, as far as the city, we are not educating these individuals and these families on ways of saving water or recycling water. But there has to be a huge outreach program for that. And the third one is conserving energy. I do see once in a while that notes are being sent by the Water and Power, but...
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
I think the largest challenge right now, as I see it, is the potential of contamination of groundwater, and I say potential, it's a concern, in our San Fernando corridor, San Fernando Road corridor. These, this is from contamination during the 50s in the aerospace industry, and that plume has crept down into Glendale as well. So continued concern there for that cleanup. Also, though, this council has created a very forward-looking anti-smoking ordinance or clean air ordinance. We have new Cal Green ordinances that we have implemented, and of course, our water conservation. These are all winners.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
See, we're dealing with chromium-6 issues. We have the first plant in the United States that is dealing with that issue. Storm drain diversion, we're not allowed to allow cigarette butts, et cetera, to go into the LA River. We're having to treat, catch those at the storm drain inlets. Buses, we've converted many of them to CNG, natural gas. Baltimore Airport Authority that I'm on is doing the same thing. We did, one was shown today at the commission meeting, where we've converted one, and we'll be converting all the others. And yes, the plume, it's at the airport, there's lawsuit going on about that now, and with Lockheed, and that plume is moving this way. We will have to deal with chromium-6 and other issues, probably for decades to come.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchaian, your one-minute response, please.
I was the only council member while on council to insist on lower chromium-6 levels on our, in our water. All the council members at that time were okay with having 50 parts per billion chromium-6 into your water, into your children's water. And I was the only one who insisted on a report that said six parts per billion was not acceptable. And I insisted to have our water to be less than six parts per billion. What you should be asking today from your council members is what is the chromium level in our water today? And I believe it has changed, and it's not public. That should be public. The second issue that is of an environmental concern is our Shaw Canyon landfill. If you can't throw your trash away, I wonder what the city would look like. So that's coming up as well. We should be looking to that.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Corollion. Should the city of Glendale have a code of ethics that applies to both employees and council members? Your two-minute response, please.
Should the city have a code of ethics, of course. And to begin with, there used to be one years before. As of today, I don't know if there is one for the city employees. However, though, I've seen and witnessed incidents where citizens are treated in a way that I'm sure the employees would not have been, would not have accepted if they were treated the same way. The lack of respect towards the community that we serve, that the city employees serve, the lack of respect by council members towards the community that they are elected to serve is obviously an indication that there has to be a code of ethics. And it is already, well, time has passed on that, but hopefully, we can talk about this more openly and discuss it, and eventually come to some kind of an ordinance which imposes, enforces, people treat others with respect, whether they are council members or they're just city employees serving in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman, your one-minute response, please.
Well, the short answer is yes. This would benefit both elected officials and the public as well. And one important element of this, I hope, will be that, again, a database of those who work on or involved, are involved with projects that are city subsidized projects. Currently, there is no such database, there's no such information readily available from our city attorney, without them going to the outside somewhere. So I hope that that will be created, that was suggested by the Glendale News Press, and I hope that comes about. Also, our mayor, current mayor, Mayor Najarian, has been sponsoring this, and that will be coming forward.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
I was going to say the same thing, it's on the council agenda shortly. And watch those, Mr. Mohill, see, just touch it. I personally think that everybody has their own set of ethical values. You learn it, you learn along the way. And many people make excuses for their own behavior, which they say is their set of ethics. So how you set down one set of standards that you can enforce and make everybody operate the same way, I think, is almost impossible. You can have a set of ethics rules, but then how do you manage and control it? It sounds nice, but everybody is different.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchaian, your one-minute response, please.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Should the city of Glendale have a code of ethics that applies to both employees and council members?
Absolutely. I think the city of Glendale should have a code of ethics. I think we should be legislating morality. It's important, because it's apparent that we can't abide by ethics on our own. It shouldn't just be to the employees, it should be actually applied to the managers, executives, and up to everyone. The question that comes to mind, however, is whether, no, I won't go there, but that's, that's enough.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
Well, ethics, that is one of our biggest problems right now in this campaign, the public trust. Mr. Weaver was fined $9,000 for money laundering in 2009, and here is the evidence right here, public document.
Ma'am, I thought there was going to be no personal stuff in here, my...
Public record.
...we have another incumbent who has been under investigation by ADI for having a home remodeled in their condo. And then he won't tell the public, but he goes ahead and approves their millions of dollars in housing projects. The public trust has been lost in this election, and I'd like to restore it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be directed to Mr. Drayman. What do you believe the city council could do to improve their relationship with the Glendale Board of Education? Your two-minute response, please.
Great question. Let me start by telling you why that is, why that relationship is so important. When you're an elected official in this city, and even if you're not, you recognize very quickly that the main reason people come to Glendale in the first place is our Glendale schools, and primary, and in particular, our primaries. That is the reason, that is the major attraction for people to come here, buy homes, to rent here, and live here, and become stakeholders in our city. When I joined the council in 2007, we didn't have an elected official, a council member, who was willing to sit with our Glendale Unified School District partners. I volunteered to be that person, I have been the council liaison ever since. As a result, we have had joint meetings, joint projects, joint building projects, joint publications, assisted with all manners of the projects with the school district. I think their determination is that we are much closer as organizations now, we coordinate much better now, and yes, it is very important, and I hope to continue doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your one-minute response, please.
I hate to disappoint Mr. Drayman, but years before he was on the council, I was the liaison to the school district. And to be very honest, I didn't continue to stay on there. Why? I went there even as mayor. I would sit there, and I was totally ignored. Guy they wanted to talk to was the city manager. And after sitting there and not being asked to participate, I says, heck, no need for me to be here, they got the person they want. But we've had a lot more efforts, relationships with the school district, on synthetic turf fields, on Pacific Edison Park, other school facilities, we've had a lot of good relationships. And just because it seems a little strange now because of something called magnet schools in northwest Glendale, doesn't mean we don't have a very good working relationship. I know the superintendent, the vice superintendent, I know most of the principals in the schools. So I think we have a very good relationship.
Thank you. Mr. Menuchaian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what I was going to say before. I was going to say code of ethics for some of the members of the public. I wasn't going to refer to any of the incumbents or anything like that, just so we're clear. As far as working with our colleagues in the public schools as well as the college, I think it's important for any council member or anyone in the community who is capable of helping the schools, helping the city, to work together to achieve what we must achieve for our children. And that is, that is the most important thing, and we should look beyond our personal beliefs, we should look beyond our personal fears, and we should work together to help the community, to help the children. We've done that before. We've helped fund the Glendale High School artificial turf field, we've helped fund a number of other elementary schools where we had green spaces instead of asphalt. As a council member, I voted for those, and I strongly believe that working together, we can achieve anything.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your one-minute response, please.
We can talk about nice things like, we're going to work with the Board of Education as council members, but I think what they want is some concrete doings. For example, why can't we reduce the utilities they pay, like water and electricity? They do that in Los Angeles, but of course, we need the money here in Glendale. That's why this city council won't reduce their fees. We have the highest utilities among the four cities around us. I don't blame the schools not wanting to talk with the city council. What have they done for them? Thank you. It's all about money.
Thank you. Mr. Corollion, your one-minute response, please.
I do realize that in the past, there have been some attempts to improve relationships with the school district, whether it's the organization or principals or the superintendent. However, though, for me, to measure success and to see whether those contacts or meetings or relationships have been successful, would have been to see schools, school fields, actually, open and available to the communities where they're located. Unfortunately, I have not seen that. Someone has to take the leadership, and I believe the school, the city council has to do that, has to take the first step in encouraging schools to open their fields for youth who live in that same community. So instead of taking the wrong route and getting involved in drugs and gangs, our youth will be able to play on those fields, especially that we don't have soccer fields primarily in South Glendale neighborhoods.
Thank you. We will now begin the candidates' closing statements, and we're going to go in reverse ballot order. And we'll begin with Mr. Drayman. Your closing statement, please.
Well, thank you, thanks to the League again. Four years ago, with your support and the support of a very professional city council, we were able to innovate a positive path forward for the residents of this city. And with your help, I was able to complete a reform of our city's design review and appeal process. I was able to move our design review meetings to the evenings, when our residents could attend. I sponsored the archiving of all of our city meetings on our website, so that you can watch them whenever you wish. I was able to bring about a complete reform of our city's appointment process for board and commission members. No longer can a single council member pack a board or commission with two and three commission members. I sponsored the effort to remove cellphone towers from our residential neighborhoods. I successfully led the effort to save Chevy Chase Branch Library. I brought the Museum of Neon Art, Mona, from Los Angeles to Glendale, our first downtown museum, when it arrives. I created Glendale's Community Garden Program. I brought Glendale a new arts and entertainment district with Lemley Theaters as the anchor. I advocated for historic districting before I was elected, and I'm proud to say that once I arrived here as an elected official, I was able to support it from the dais. And if you happen to live in the Chryscenta Valley, and I know there's some looking in right now, I brought Trader Joe's to Montrose. I brought design guidelines to the Foothill Corridor for the first time ever to protect the integrity of the Chryscenta Valley. I brought the Sunday Harvest Market to Montrose. I made the preservation of Mountain Oaks as undeveloped open space my personal commitment. And I sponsored the preservation of Historic Rockhaven Sanitarium as the future home of the Montrose Branch Library. Ladies and gentlemen, if you care about your city, if you care about your quality of life, if you care that you have a voice in the decisions that affect you and your family, I ask you to please vote for me for reelection, John Drayman, on April 5th. You won't make a better investment in your city's future. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Corollion, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. Tonight, you've been more knowledgeable of the problems facing Glendale, and now you need to decide if this time, you truly want a new direction. With the incumbents, we'll continue to have budget deficits supported by borrowing, and pension reform will not be addressed. With the incumbents, small business will continue to lose to national chains. With the incumbents... With the incumbents, only some areas of Glendale will get proper planning, and property rights will continue to be secondary to connected developers. I pledge to you that I will support property rights as one of the most essential rights of our democracy. I will make sure that the needs of small businesses become an important part of city planning and policy. I will maintain the character of our neighborhoods and preserve historic nature of this city. I will do my best to support our natural resources, clean available water, clean air, renewable energy, and the maintenance of our green space. I promise to be prudent with our tax dollars and will strive to make Glendale the safest mid-sized city in America once again. I can assure you of this, I will serve the interests of all neighborhoods and residents. I will use one measure to decide our expenditures and policies, and that is, how will they improve our quality of life? This year, more than any other, you have clear choices to make. My name is Shahi Corleone, and I'll champion the taxpayers and ratepayers' rights first. I ask you for your vote of confidence coming April 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mohill, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Three years ago, the Indigenous Tree Ordinance brought me to City Hall one night, and I stayed to witness how our local government really worked. What I saw was the city council's need to pass additional fees for trash, water, electricity, permit fees, impact fees, and on and on. At every corner, staff would come before the city council and recommend increases in fees and utility rates to support a growing and bloated budget. This approach for managing our city has impacted our quality of life. We must find better ways to manage our city. A city budget of over $800 million is not acceptable. A city debt of hundreds of millions of dollars is not acceptable, and a city pension obligation of over $1 billion is not acceptable either. We must make tough decisions. Our problems are not in the revenue side of budgeting, ladies and gentlemen, but is on the expense side. City departments must take serious steps in looking for ways to reduce expenses. The number of city managers at all levels must be reduced. $16 billion in workman compensation claims will no longer be acceptable. Impact fees must be reduced or eliminated. Overtime pay needs to be controlled. Glendale must really become known as a business-friendly, and the cost of government on our families must be reduced. A brighter future for the corner of our life and your support will make Glendale a better place to be. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Mohill, running for Glendale City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Manoukian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. I would like to thank everyone who's here again and who is watching from home. I would like to address one issue regarding the public. I think it's important to start the budget process now, not after the election. And as far as my closing remark, I would like you to ask yourself, are you better off today than you are four years ago? Are the costs to provide your utilities under control? Are you paying more for your water during recessionary times? Is the council today transparent in conducting the affairs of the people? Are you concerned that our city's being financially mismanaged? Now is the time to make a choice for change. While I was on council, I was the only council member who had sidewalk office hours where committee members could stop by and address their concerns. When elected, I will have my calendar public so everyone can see who I'm meeting with. I will also have all documentation regarding the city, staff, and the public, meaning, and the public, in, in the public domain, meaning on the web. It's time to reintroduce public service to our local government. I respectfully ask for your vote, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, your two-minute closing statement, please.
I'm very sorry that it had to get personal here again tonight, like it does at every single forum. Only eight more to go to listen to that. One thing that I think everybody should know at home, is a concerted effort by some candidates to keep this election extremely quiet. I've been asked many times, what election? It's been an attempt to do that, and I'm trying to tell you, get out and vote, tell your neighbors to vote. It's very important. As a democracy, you have a right to vote, exercise it. Some things that haven't been touched on here tonight, I, throughout, yes, we have a balanced budget. In our general fund alone, we have the $50 million reserve account. We have over $1.1 billion in assets in this city. Our, on salary and benefits, the employee pays 9% of their own plus 2% of the employers. We're the only city in this neighborhood, maybe in Southern California, that does that, and we have now instituted a two-tier system. Only 21 cities in the state have a two-tier system, 480 don't. We're one of the 20. Electrical rates, the LA Department of Water and Power did a study, and it shows Glendale's right in the middle of all the rates. I don't care to listen to Mr. Mohill's rates, I'd rather listen to the professionals at the Department of Water and Power that says we're right in the middle on the rate structures, and that has been presented to the city council. Want to repeat, we are a good city. We've got 540 acres of open space now in, in Glendale, historic districts, the Americana, five new mini parks, smoking ordinance, new projects being constructed. I firmly believe my major responsibilities are to keep the city fiscally sound, which it is, provide good services at reasonable costs, make sound decisions for the greater good of the city. And I will continue you to do that. If you will, leave it to Weaver, and I'm number one on your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our forum. Our thanks to the candidates who are willing to step forward to serve the public. Many complain, but very few are willing to get out there and work. The League would also like to thank both our audience in attendance and those of you at home. Please be sure to go to the polls on April 5th or to mail in and drop, or drop off your ballot so that it is received by April 5th. If you have any questions at all about the election, go to glandalevotes.org, which is the official Glendale elections website. It has everything that you need to know about the election in order to make an informed choice. Thank you very much, and good night.